All right. Good morning. Welcome to the August 15th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. We do expect that Supervisor Carpenter-Harris will be joining us. Hopefully, she's just unavoidably detained in a positive way. And so we will have Supervisor Fraser lead us in the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Before we enter into the agenda, the first one is the recordings of these meetings are now available on the Trinity County website. Links should be there. And then also you can just go to YouTube and search Trinity County and they should come up. So you no longer need to rely on Darryl Forslund's link as we have in the past. The second thing is that our last meeting, we did not have a closed session, so there will not be a closed session report out this morning. Public comment. This is a time for information from the public on matters appearing on this agenda or within not appearing on this agenda. Or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Is there any public comment? See none in the room?
I have no raised hands.
Great. That we will close public comment. Moving on to reports and announcements, we will start with reports from department heads. And in the room, we have Liz Hamilton. And I'm assuming this is going to be with your HHS hat on. All right.
Good morning, Chair members of the board. Liz Hamilton, Health and Human Service Director. Business operations continue as usual. I wanted to come up today and give a shout out and appreciation to our staff. And as you recall, we had a cyber incident with the county on early in July. And since that time, actually, not all of our state systems have been restored. And so for public assistance and adult services programming, and our staff have had to have workarounds to keep business operations going. And just the impact that that's had for the last five, almost six weeks. And it's an incredible lift. And I just want to acknowledge and thank them and not only program staff and our executive team, but our fiscal staff and auditor and treasurer staff, as this impacts well beyond our office. And Shasta County and Tohama County have been working with us daily to ensure that these programs and the public are served. And so thank you to those counties for their support as well. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I see no other department heads in the room. Any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right. Report from County Administrative Officer, CIO Ty Hill.
Thank you, Chair. So I got a couple items. First one, the Forest Service Good Neighbor Authority supplemental project agreement has been signed by DOT and is going through the final final signature processes within Forest Service. So that is very good news. And it was signed prior to the federal government fiscal year end and in time. So the county will in fact see some revenue from this, these specific projects in our county, this county fiscal year, which is again, very, very good news for us. The courthouse roof project, you may have have noticed there have been some barricades around the one side of the building. It is, it has started this week. It's scheduled to finish in approximately two weeks. And part of that project, I had previously come to the board asking for the full amount. We were at, Susie Hawkins was able to work with the courts and they agreed to use 200,000 of the courthouse construction funds towards that project. So we will then be able to reallocate 200,000 of the LATCF funds to other county priorities, again, which is good.
I'm trying to, sorry, I was finishing up my last sentence. It was the roof that you were
The courthouse roof project, yes. Under the abandoned vehicle abatement program, seems to come in in waves, but we had three RVs over the last two weeks, two down river and one in Douglas City area that needed to be abated. And we went ahead and did that and got those off the roads. However, that basically used our entire budget for the year for those three vehicles. So when we have future vehicles, we will need to come to the board for a budget action in that area, but we will work that as appropriate. We had another good department head meeting last week. One of the topics discussed was a county employee appreciation luncheon type of event. We are working the details on that, but we're looking late October, early November for that. And the more information will come as planning progresses. And the last item I have is dealing with the topic of water. This is another good news story from my perspective. So San Joaquin County, who was gracious enough to include us in the lawsuit, Trinity County was a participant as well. But we prevailed at the Fifth Appellate District Court of California against Westland's Water District. The subject matter was an anticipated contract between Westlands and the United States concerning the ongoing delivery of federal recommendation, project water and repayment of certain financial obligations. The Superior Court declined to grant relief and ultimately dismissed Westland's validation action for multiple reasons. Most pertinently, the draft was found to be materially deficient in its failure to specify Westland's financial obligations under the anticipated contract. This is a good victory regarding the long-term water contracts and rights. However, you know, this is, this is far from over and this topic will be one that county will want to stay engaged in for the foreseeable future. And that is all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Regarding all of that whole statement on the water, would you mind forwarding those statements to each of us in an email? It was all important and difficult to capture.
I will forward that statement. Plus, I will forward the entire opinion from the court. And there's about a, oh, two and a half, three-page background and analysis in there, which gives you a really good synopsis of really the history of the topic and the importance of it and the significance of what has been going through the courts and will probably continue to go through the courts.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisor Carpenter-Harris. Welcome. All right. Reports from members of the Board of Supervisors. We'll start with Supervisor Fraser.
Good evening. I don't have anything to report.
Supervisor Lutweller?
Okay, I had no out-of-county travel since the last meeting. We had the fire chiefs meeting last night and a couple of things came out of that. One is, we will be receiving from the fire chiefs a letter of support about revisiting the decision regarding snow maintenance for volunteer fire departments. So I know, County Council, you were saying that we could discussion to indicate if there is support from the board for, for you to work on something that would position us to have that back on the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the volunteer fire departments were disappointed when it was not approved. The last time, my understanding is to put it back on the agenda. We would need to vote to approve waiving of the rules. And so that's what I was asking to be done. And what the volunteer fire chiefs are going to not only request that we revisit, hopefully approve, and then they're giving some indication about their level of support for it as well as the limitations. At this point, only Coffey Creek is definitely asking for it. And Trinity Center said they might. The rest of them didn't have a need for it.
All right. So with council's guidance, I would just look for consensus from the board. Supervisor Fraser. Okay, Supervisor Gogan? Supervisor Carpenter-Harris. All right.
Okay, thank you. The second, another letter of support will be coming from the fire chiefs to in, to request for us to introduce an ordinance limiting fireworks. Basically, because we have no ordinance, that means that we are basically just falling back on the states. And if you look at, say, Redding, Shasta, others, their language is much more along the lines of unless you have a legally permitted event with approved fireworks, then you can't do that. And so I'm not trying to work out that. I'm just letting you know that that is coming and that, again, I guess the same kind of thing to see what the board's feelings are about that. But it would, it would basically lead to us asking council to look at other counties, come up with some language that they think is a good recommendation for us to implement to provide some more safety for our county in the midst of our fire issues.
And so looking for consensus again. Supervisor Carpenter-Harris, are you in favor of that?
Yes, just mine. Yes, I do. Well, I don't have any out-of-county travel, but I did meet locally.
Hang on just a second. I know you're busy trying to kind of settle and orient. Right now, what I'm asking you for is if you would be in agreement with the board looking at a letter of support from the fire chiefs, asking us to consider an ordinance that would limit fireworks without a permit.
Yeah, limited to permitted use.
I would consider looking at that, yes.
Okay. Supervisor Gogan, okay. Supervisor?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm trying to understand why we would, we would need board consensus for the fire chiefs to send us something they want us to look at.
Be consensus for council to put together a draft ordinance for our consideration.
I would, I don't know. I would be okay with that, but I would put it more on the Fire Chiefs Association to come up with a draft ordinance to send to us. They know what they want. Council doesn't know what they want. So I'm okay with it, but I think it should be, the ball should be in their court. Let them bring us an ordinance and then we can use council to tweak it.
Okay. Supervisors agree with that?
Okay, thank you. We also discussed the requests that are due by August 31st for the Title III funds. There's, I think it's $280,000 that is available. It's last year's funds as well as this year's funds because we got behind. And so they were collectively all working on what they are submitting. And then, of course, there are people outside of that particular meeting that can submit, but we have, we should be looking in early September for a meeting where we are approving all these requests, or at least selecting from them if we have too many requests for the money that's available. They also noted it was a very interesting opportunity, but they have been given the opportunity to have a training session for the fire departments at an intact structure. So they will basically, you know, train in various ways, including setting fire and putting out an intact structure. So they're excited about that happening here in the near future. And of course, working through all the appropriate permits and such. I did notify the North Coast Resource Partnership of our decision from the last meetings and they have acknowledged that. So hopefully everything's set for them to work with our designated participants. And I am working with, CSAC leaders have followed up again on the potential support of grant-related training. And so I know that there are a couple of people are going to participate in that with me. I would, to the public, say, if you are interested in receiving grant-related training from the state or county's association, then please let me know and then we'll make sure that you get looped into this as we pursue that. Or they're not committed to it yet, but they do want to meet with us and, and get more information about what we're after. I have economic development, the SCED, Superior, what you said, meeting, board meeting on Thursday, and then the workforce development, NORTEC board meeting the following week.
Okay.
That's it.
Good, thank you. I have no out-of-county travel to report out, nothing further to report. Supervisor Gogan?
I have no out-of-county travel. I did go to a NorCal AMS meeting earlier this week. And everything worked out fine there. They're a great organization, well-structured. They do a fantastic job. I also, myself and Trent, went and met with one of the colleagues in the reconsultation effort for the Trinity River to see if we can find some common ground. I think we, we did find some common ground and that will be very, very helpful to us in the coming years. The county is engaged with the overall reconsultation effort. Myself and Trent also attended the Interested Parties Meeting, which if you want to know who's really interested about our water, there was nine power companies there from south of Trinity County. So you can get the idea who's interested in our, our water. It's it's everybody south of us. And they were all there. We've also put forward, there was initially four draft alternatives for the water Interested Parties for the water situation. The county put forward a separate one, which now turned into six draft alternatives. So we're going to have to go through the, the blending of these six into four to come up with for decent alternatives to move forward with. Also, there is a meeting coming up. I'm pretty sure it's going to be on September 6th. It'll be hosted by TRRP. And it'll be on the winter variable flows at Indian Creek Hotel. I'll hopefully have a little bit more information about that before that meeting. But for now, I think that's going to be the date, probably six o'clock in the evening. And it will be TRRP talking about the winter variable flows. That is it for me.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Carpenter-Harris.
Hello, yes. I didn't have any out-of-county travel, but I met locally with department heads of different organizations, TRRP and others, just to try to continue to grow in my knowledge of each one of the organizations that we work with. But other than that, just working with local issues in my district, back and forth, spoke with, had a meeting with Trent to go over a couple of things. Also met with Trent and Department Head of Department of Transportation to talk about some of the Garrett Road options. So things are continuing to move on some of those longstanding issues. I do want to make just a brief thank you. Last night, I started listening to the radio chatter around, I don't know, 10 o'clock. And as the chatter continued to pick up as different volunteer fire departments, US Forest Service, Cal Fire, the Hoopa Tribe, started to identify lightning strikes that had hit the ground and fires and smoke concerns. It just, it just really, really impresses on my heart. And I would like to just say thank you so much to our volunteer fire departments because at 1:00 in the morning, when I'm listening to them run the backroads of, of our region, looking for smoke reports and, and flames. And I can hear them talking to each other over the river, you know, I can see you on the ridge. I see your headlights. You're almost there, you know, as they communicate back and forth. I'm just continually reminded that the first ones who are on the scene are volunteers who are also our neighbors. And I just want to say thank you to all of the volunteer fire departments who were on deck last night and who will be over the next couple of days as these lightning strikes move through our communities. And just to shout out to all the people, make sure you have your stuff ready. You know, gas for your generator, make sure you have water, make sure you have some of those things ready because if power goes out, you know how to do it. So just take care out there.
All right. Thank you. And agreed. All right. Reports from ad hoc members, Trinkin Water.
I think I went over that, my initial one. Did you have anything to add?
All right. Cannabis ordinance ad hoc?
Do. So when we had our last meeting, we finalized a timeline and a brief set of frequently asked questions that were then posted on the cannabis division website. So it, the timeline is, is letting the public know when the public meetings will be to share what has been developed from proposed updates to our ordinances. And then it provided some frame of reference because we'd had some questions about, well, what are you looking at? And what have people asked you to look at? And so we wanted to give people a sense of, it's not every single sentence of the ordinances that will be addressed, but it is the major areas. And so that information is now available on the cannabis division website. And we're just continuing our meetings in preparation for that timeline.
Okay, great. All right. Economic development. I recall that you could do.
Okay. Nicolette is in our watershed organization and is a member of the steering committee for the SURF funding, the economic resiliency funds. And this is that 25, $30 million that we've spoken about that's kind of been driving some of our efforts in the short term. So I was able to sit on that steering committee meeting for him in his absence. And so we got some updates. I think the main thing to share is that the timing of that continues to shift out a little bit. And what we learned is that rather than understanding that we would be expecting decisions about projects this fall, what we really will be seeing in this fall is a plan for the 10-county region. And then that plan will help to guide what kinds of projects get approved. And, and again, a lot of the emphasis was on if there are multiple ways in which a project can impact our counties from a workforce standpoint, economic development standpoint, housing standpoint, so forth, those will probably get more weight in the decision-making process and anything that supports more than one county. And so that could be a bigger picture project that goes across multiple counties and then has local implementation. So more detail still to come. They're still very much fleshing this out, but in the fall, we should expect to have much more detail. And in the meantime, we're moving forward. So in response to that, the same day, we had our second public workshop on economic development hosted by the TCDC, the recently formed organization, trying to help kind of nurture, if you will, economic development efforts here in the county. We had about 20 people show up. We, we gathered additional ideas. We gathered additional input regarding priorities and the level of support. And I think most importantly, we talked about next steps. So how do we make sure that we actually start to get some things done instead of just talking about those? And so we came up with a list of about five or 10 things that now TCDC and others need to step up and deliver on. We also, from that process, and this is, it's an informal process, but it is an indication of where, what kind of ideas we're getting and which ideas we think have the most merit now at this point. And that's based on, do we think they have viability to get approved for SURF at this point? Although there will be other funding. Do they have volunteer support and do they have leadership support? And the top six, if I've got this right, one, two, three, four, five, six projects. Number one was increase, improve lodging. And that means lodging of all kinds, including housing, temporary economic-type development where people can come stay when they come in to visit. But any kind of improving of our lodging in the county. Cannabis Operations Center was number two. This does support manufacturing distribution so that more of the money from the product that's raised here, grown here in the county, the more that money stays in the county. Number three was made in Trinity or shop trendy. There's a, there's a, I think a shop Humboldt or something like that, or Humboldt made kind of an approach, but basically a way to help all the makers in the county have a way to better market their products through a centralized platform. And Sports Complex was next on the list. And finally, in that top six was the CD Veterans Hall renovation. So again, that's not trying to limit anybody's efforts, but that is holding up and highlighting those that, from the people that have shown up to these meetings, 40 at one, 20 at the next one, what they felt they would most get behind and that we might have the most success in. And yeah, the other, only other thing I had here was the next steps. We did have some conversation about the need for us to look at county policies, ordinances, processes, everything else that could be improved to streamline economic development-related efforts of these kinds and others. And so I think there will be some interest in that. And, and I know that Chair Cox had some interest in pursuing that too. So we didn't get into much discussion there because we had to deal with something else in the, in the meantime, but that, that's something that we raised. And we did acknowledge that, as we confirmed with the general plan meeting the last time, our presentation, there is a process by which they will be helping us identify streamlining opportunities. But I think there's interest in saying, well, do we have to wait two years? And can we do some things in the meantime? And can we make it an ongoing process where we have good feedback? So I think we're in good shape. And, and last night at the fire chiefs meeting, Commissioner Fall from the Planning Commission was introducing that the Planning Commission was reintroducing the subdivision review committee and needing some input from the fire chiefs on that process. So that's, I think, an example of the things that we can be doing while we work towards the final general plan proposals about recommended improvements.
Perfect. So I'd like to have a little bit of conversation and you can correct me in any place that, that you see fit. I would like the public to be aware that the TCDC is not a county entity. This is a very much a public-created, public entity. And it just is convenient that a member of the Board of Supervisors is a part of that and also a member of the economic development ad hoc. And that allows for some really streamlined facilitation. And again, it's convenient that it worked out that way. But to feel as though the county is driving that forward, that would be a misnomer. And I just want people to really understand.
Thank you.
That. The other piece is CEO Ty Hill and Supervisor Lutweller and myself, as the ad hoc members, are going to sit down and talk about what would it look like to kind of bifurcate our economic development efforts to start looking into ways by which ordinance revisions may help economic improvement that was very much a desire expressed. And it does seem like that could be helpful. It also is, that's why we need to sit down and talk about it because that's going to be a staff-driven effort and we need to look at what, what is the availability and margin that staff would have to look into that. So we don't want to get a big idea and then derail what CEO Ty Hill has in mind for kind of their focus and their concentration. But I do want people to know that that need was very much heard. Good? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will move into the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the border staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? See none in the room?
I have no raised hands.
All right. Do any board members have items they wish to pull? All right, hearing none. I will be pulling item 2.11. Approve and agreement. I will talk about that in a moment. First of all, I would entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar, everything minus item 2.11.
Move to approve all but 2.11?
Oh, second.
All right. We have a motion from Supervisor Lutweller, from Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right. Regarding item 2.11, approve an agreement with B Sharp Electrical Contractor to provide the purchase and installation services of a new 80-watt generator and a 400-amp automatic transfer switch. This is under Health and Human Services, no impact to the general fund, $92,793 from OES grants, including Public Safety Power Shut-Off and Emergency Management Performance Grant. The reason I'm pulling this item is because within the last month, a member of my family now works for Sharp Electric. I've reached out to the FPPC to find out if there's any problem with Commissioner Sharp serving as commissioner because of this employment arrangement. And they said absolutely not. But they did say further be advised if any item were to come before the board regarding this business, it would be incumbent upon me to recuse from the item. So I will be doing that at this time. And you, Supervisor Lutweller, can handle this item.
Thank you.
So since this has been pulled, we should check for a public comment?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Any motion from the board on this one item that was pulled for consideration?
I'll move to approve.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Supervisor Goken.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lutwiler.
Aye.
All right, public hearings, item 3.1 for solid waste. Conduct a public hearing to receive any objections or protests to the 2324 delinquent list for solid waste parcel fees and adopt a resolution which confirms the list. No impact to the general fund. Any changes made to the report will impact the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. We have our Deputy Director of Solid Waste, Diane Rader. Good morning.
Good morning. This is the final part of our parcel fee billing for the year, and it is running about the same as it has in past years. And I've submitted one list that was everything that was outstanding when the item was due to be submitted, and I have just handed out a supplemental list, which are payments that we've received before, after the fact there that we'd like to go ahead and recognize and reduce them off of the delinquent list before it rolls. I think that's enough of a summary. I've been through this a couple of times this year so far. So any questions on it? This is a public hearing to see if there are any comments and questions.
Okay. Questions from board members? All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My question is, we have seven parcels that are not parcels, so I was curious in who they are. The first seven?
The first seven are unsecured. And I didn't bring my list with names. They are generally schools and government agencies that have a different payment period that we see the payments afterwards.
Oh, okay.
They don't roll anywhere, and we just keep on getting them collected.
Okay. I was just curious because they're not parcels. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I see no more comment in the room. Any on Zoom? All right, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
What percentage of this 3,800 is our total amount that we collect?
We're running at about 18% uncollected, 18, 19%, I think it was. Yeah, we've collected 82% of our build so far.
82%?
Yes. Okay, so that changed a little bit from what my number was. It was close. We generally are somewhere between 18 and 25% from one year to the next on it.
And you eventually get it all. It's just this two-step process?
It rolls to the property taxes, and some people really prefer that it do that so that they don't have to make a separate payment. They just pay it with their property taxes, and they can pay it into installments if they want. And we see the same ones, basically, that go through that every year. And then there are the others that are just laid in pain.
And there's a $35 fee when it's done this way, right?
Yes.
So they're paying for that convenience and hopefully covering the costs of all the work that you have to do to chase it down.
Yes.
All right. If there's no other discussion, my understanding is we need to adopt a resolution to confirm the list.
Did you, did we have the, open the public hearing?
I did.
All right. Well, nobody, sorry, I forgot.
So do you need a motion to approve as presented?
A motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution with the supplemental list provided today.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Right. So motion from Supervisor Lutwiler, second from Supervisor Goken.
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Have a good day. County Matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Building and Development Services, item 4.1, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section 15.26.40D pertaining to electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining, no impact to the general fund. All right, thank you. Building and Development Director Presley. Good morning.
So I just want to start off by reading some code excerpts. AB 1236 codified in Government Code Section 65850.7 requires all California cities and counties to develop expedited streamlined permitting process for electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. The law was developed to further the availability of charging infrastructure to help drive the deployment of zero emissions vehicles. The faster charging stations are deployed, the sooner California's air quality improves, greenhouse gas emissions are reduced, and local economic benefits are captured. Jurisdictions are required by AB 1236 to limit EVCS project review to health and safety requirements. AB 970 adds specific binding timelines to the review, to the review period based on the size of the project and clarifies parking requirements. So this has been before the board a couple of times. It's been before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission advises that the board find all zoning districts to be eligible for EVCS and to consider ways to encourage EVCS, such as not increasing taxes on parcels for EVCS improvements, and to adopt the current checklist and ordinance as is. The current checklist and ordinance was adopted, except the ordinance was not adopted as is. There were changes that were made in which there were restrictions put on the EVCS, basically the charging stations, electrical vehicle charging stations. So with that, with that kind of overview, Trinity County Code Section 15.26 is out of compliance with Government Code and AB 1236 and should be amended to meet the state intent. So that's what I wanted to talk to everyone about this morning. I know it can seem kind of redundant to bring the same thing back, but when I was reviewing everything and the outcome of the last, you know, board meeting vote on the item, we're still out of compliance. And so I had to make one, you know, at least once, come before the board myself and basically make a plea for us to get into compliance. I do understand the arguments that were made at the last meeting, the last board meeting, when this was basically not voted for. But I just think it's one of those things where we're such a small county, we need to capture any kind of grant funding that we can get from the state that might come available. And this would be one of those things that maybe would not allow us to get grant funding, and not currently, but maybe in the potential future, not render us eligible for some kind of grant funding. We need all we can get.
All right, thank you. Anybody have questions?
I do. My question is, who made the determination that we're out of compliance?
We received an email from the state that told us that we were out of compliance. And there's a website that actually lists all the counties and jurisdictions in the state of California. And so when we were asked that, that was one of the, one of the decision-making points where I said, okay, we need to actually bring this back one more time, because we actually received the email stating we were out of compliance.
And I don't, memory is not serving me well of who else was on the call, but we did get on the phone with representatives that probably are the ones that then told us we were out of compliance. And they were trying to explain why and why they wanted it done the way they wanted it done and everything else. And I think more than anything, they were emphasizing that our ability to address concerns through the health and safety aspect would cover everything that they were hearing from us were concerns. They said, we think that you're too narrowly viewing what you can control with health and safety. County Council, is that what, you're kind of nodding your head? That was your takeaway as well? And, and so that was, my understanding was, we would remain out of compliance unless or until we did make this change. And if we did make this change, that we could likely take care of any things that we had concerns about with the health and safety issues that you would have the authority to implement on our behalf.
Correct.
Great. I was on that call with you.
Okay.
And that was during the time that interim CIO Garza was working with us. And my takeaway from that meeting was, had we, I didn't understand what GoBiz was, my apologies. When I set up that meeting, had I done so several months earlier, realized how beneficial that could be, and it was, obviously, we needed County Council on there with us to represent our intentions and desires. We could have, I think, probably avoided all of the, many times we've sat and discussed this, because we didn't understand, as you've said, what the health and safety code would do for us, and that it would be that catch for those considerations that were really concerning to you.
I still struggle with it because it's the state overreach. They have no, they don't have that authority. And I would like somebody to explain why they think they can take land use authority from the county. But the other thing to me is, if we make a determination that it's a threat to public health and safety to put these in zoning districts that they don't belong in, which is what we did with that one little sentence, how we can make a determination that that is a threat to health and safety. So I mean, to me, it's the state just putting their thumb on us, like, you will do what we say. We can get the same results by telling Ed, don't allow it. It's a threat to health and safety. And it's just, I struggle with it because I don't like being told what to do by the state. They don't have any business telling us what to do with our land use and zoning. So that's where I stand.
Need to go to a motion for more discussion?
Yeah, we probably should.
Yeah, we probably should do that.
Okay. I move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. So Supervisor Frazier, I want to understand from your perspective, are you just frustrated for reasons that we all would agree with because it isn't great to be told, like, from the standpoint that land use is really what a board of supervisors governs in a county?
That's about the only thing we have, and the state's taking that from us. They might as well just dictate what happens in our county.
Understood. So the other side of that equation would, from my perspective, would be to ask ourselves, is this one of those situations that's worth that fight based on what we may potentially suffer if somebody wants to put something in a place that we have, we're clearly not in compliance with the state law? So, Council, would we kind of in some way open a window to litigation there for being non-compliant?
My understanding from the meeting was that this is not a situation where they're looking to litigate it. It is more where they're looking at denying fundings for being out of compliance. So do I think we're opening it up for litigation? No. Do I think there's a chance that they could in some way inhibit our funding sources? That's what they indicated.
And I guess when I'm asking about litigation, I'm more thinking in terms, not so much from the state, but from a developer who would say, I put this in in another county, it was streamlined according to state law, and yours isn't.
You know, the fundamental principle, which this board passed the original resolution of highlighting the health and safety, is accurate. And again, I think the state acknowledged that. They just wanted us to use a different tool to get to that point. So do I think a third party would have the ability to come and litigate on it? Probably no, because the proper findings were made of the safe, the health and safety issues. But it wasn't done in the mechanism that the state wants it to be done. And so then again, that opens the door for the state to have the ability to fine us for that. And so it's a decision this board has to look at.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Another question for staff. How many commercial EV applications do you have waiting for us to streamline this?
None. But, you know, at the same time, we need, we need to look at, or at least please consider, the levels. So the first level would be the building official making substantial, out of substantial evidence, health and safety. He could, he could mandate that it go to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission could make a finding. It could be appealed, or it could be, you know, upheld, or it could just go to the board as well. So there's still, there's two lower levels. And, you know, being prior military, we always tried to handle things at the lowest level. So if it can be handled by a certified building official, and he can make that call, then it would just make it not something the board would have to necessarily worry about. So to me, it just frees up the board's time to take on bigger matters. So, and I think that's really the gist of it, is allowing the building official to make that call first, and Planning Commission, and then the board, not just have the ordinance be set up to where the board makes that decision. The real impact is if we can trust the building official, who we should, to make that decision, then we do that.
Well, I think we might have jumped the gun a little bit here. We started out with questions, then had a motion, and I don't believe we've ever had public comment. I just seen a hand raised on Zoom, so.
I did not. I did not. Thank you. My bad.
I just.
Thank you. All right. Yes, we'll open public comment. Any in the room? Seeing none on Zoom?
Veronica Kelly Alby.
Good morning, Veronica Kelly Alby, Douglas City. This has been a particularly tricky subject, and I side with Dan on this, on the state taking away the ability for our county to determine land use. And I'm even a little more concerned as I, now that I've heard some discussion regarding putting it in the hands of, while we, we absolutely trust our employees and they work hard. Most recently, I've watched a county meeting where a county employee, well, a board or commission asked them, why are we here if we can't have anything to say on this? And the answer was, for political appeasement. So it really did seem to take some of those decisions out of the hands of the general public and commissions that are in place, or boards that are in place. So I do caution on that as well. I think we all know that there are some places that are completely inappropriate for an ECV to be placed, but we do want to see that kind of growth within our county. And it is unfortunate the state is trying to force us to live like they do in the city, and they don't have the same terrain, they don't have the same fire issues, they don't have the same community issues. So if there was a way to work, not necessarily work around it, we want to be in compliance, we don't want to lose any grant money. However, I just caution you to be careful about leaving it in one or two people's hands on something this serious for the county. And they, I think the employees bring in great information, great research, great experience to it, but sometimes it's a bigger picture for everybody. And my understanding is, once it goes into a more one-person or two-person decision, it's ministerial, and that takes, it takes some of those decisions out of your hands, let alone the general community's hands. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have no other raised hands. Okay, thank you. With that, we will close public comment. And apologies, Veronica, for missing that step.
So it would seem that item A underneath this, where it starts out, it is the intent of this ordinance to encourage, pretty much covers everything that we're trying to cover here, especially since this almost seems to be somewhat of a non-starter here. We have no applicants in line. It's not like there's 23 people looking to apply for this. And we do have the building officials' authority to address this at a higher priority level. So I see how we can still kind of keep control, but make this, pass this amendment, and come into compliance with the state.
Is there a way by which, I mean, the commenter's point was well-made, in that if we, if we leave it in the hands of whoever, and I'm not speaking of anyone, generally, if we leave this in the hands of an employee or a couple of employees, and those change over time. generally, if we leave this in the hands of an employee or a couple of employees and those change over time and what have you. It does become ministerial. Is there a way by which we can become compliant with the state, but say it does need to go to?
State is requiring we make it a ministerial permit process. And the issue I have with that, that's why if you have an ordinance that's interpreted by an employee, you end up with different interpretations by different employees and you don't have an an even playing field. So this guy could come in and apply and get turned down and have to get a C U P. And then we could have turnover in our building department, environmental health, wherever it is. The next guy comes in and applies for the same exact thing, rubber stamped and gets without having to go through the process. Because the state's saying you don't have the ability to say you're all going to go through the same process. You're all going to have to be looked at by a county employee. Sure, that what I see that doing is not only is it going to bugger up the works at the building department or the environmental health department, but it it leaves it too much open for interpretation and that's why ordinances have the word shall instead of should, if they're well written. There's got to be a baseline to work from. And what the state's telling us is the baseline is it's a free for all. Everybody can do it wherever they want, unless you can determine that it's a threat to health and safety. I think that we've had that discussion. We made that determination that it's a threat to health and safety to put it where it doesn't belong. But I don't like being threatened either.
But I would ask, why can't we trust the county staff and the established processes to to work if the official makes a determination and it's not?
I trust the county staff to do their job. I don't trust the county staff to all be the same.
I, I, I don't, I don't either.
And so you'll get a different outcome by who, who is looking at this. If it goes to environmental health, they're looking at something different than if it goes to building. And if it goes has to go through all those processes, what if we have a turnover in environmental health? But if if Christie's gone and we hire someone new, the answer is going to be different. If we have an ordinance that says this is what's required, you still might get a different outcome from a planning commission or from a board. But at least there's an established method that you're going to have to go through this process before you put your charging station in rural residential or R three. The other, yeah, the other issue is like, let's use up some of our multifamily residential to put in an E V charging station. What's the biggest cry in Trinity County? We have no housing. So if we cover up that lot with charging station, you don't put an apartment complex in there because it's covered in charging station. It's land use and planning shouldn't be dictated by the state. It should come from the county. And that, that's the issue I have with it. I, I don't have an issue against electric vehicle charging stations and I dang sure don't have an issue with streamlining all processes. The issue I have is with the state mandating how we do it. I thought we came up with a fairly well thought out solution in the past. It's like, okay, yeah, we're going to streamline it. But if you meet these criteria, you'd have to go through the process. Apparently, the state doesn't like that. It's, I don't think it's our problem. I think it's their problem. They're they think that they should control what happens in our county and I don't like that. I think we would leave it in the hands of the wisdom of our building officials, whether they're the present ones or the future ones. And I really don't think there's going to be a lot anywhere in Trinity County that's going to fill up with electric vehicle charging stations anytime soon. I don't even see the ones that are at Holiday. There are, is it Holiday now? I don't even see those being used all that often. I do see a car or two out there. I just kind of see this as a somewhat of a non-issue here. And I think in A of this, it kind of spells out what we should do if the building official makes a finding based on substantial evidence that the electric vehicle charging station could have a specific adverse effect on the public health or safety as defined in this chapter, the county may require the applicant to apply for use permit. I would I would lean on our building officials authority and their, their advice and their knowledge. Especially since I almost see this as a nonstarter here. I just, I just don't see a lot of this going to happen here. Especially in out of the way neighborhoods, up a hill somewhere. I just, I just don't see it happening here.
I mean, I, I guess the way I'm thinking about it is the billing official makes a determination. If the applicant doesn't like that, they can still bring that to the planning commission. I mean, there's still a process for that. If that decision is not liked or is appropriate, that can still be brought to the board. I mean, there's a process to, that this is in place. It's just the, the starting point is the billing official making the determination, not one of the commissions or the boards.
So
and that's where I lean back on. If we just let the billing official make the initial determination, then we still have the same processes in place.
I, I get that. And like I said, the issue to me, the issue to me is not electric vehicle charging stations. The issue to me is we're being dictated to how we do our job. If we changed the wording on this, and I've said this before, let's change this to commercial cannabis cultivation is allowable in any zoning unless you make a determination that it's a public threat to health and safety. What's the difference? It's still a land use. It still should be in the areas it belongs. What if, let's allow apartment complexes in any zoning. What makes electric vehicle charging stations so much different? It's still a land use. It's still, and then we're talking about commercial land use. We weren't. We spelled it out specifically. This isn't about your plug in your hybrid at home. That's the problem I have with it. I don't care about E V charging stations and streamlining them. I care about the fact that next time, what will the state mandate we do? And are we just going to, oh, well, it's prob, I agree. It's not a non-issue in Trinity County. We don't have people lined up to put in charging stations for the handful of electric vehicles we have in the county. The issue is that we're giving up what tiny bit of authority we have to the state. That's the issue I have.
I I agree with Dan. I, I also take issue with the, the the dictatorship of if you don't do what we say, we're going to exclude you from opportunities. In a state and a country where we're constantly speaking of equity and inclusion, I find it interesting that the very state that leads with that on a continual basis says to us, if you don't do as we say, then you will not be included and we will not see you equal as other opportu, as other counties that do do what we say. Dan's correct, I believe. If you put in any other word in front of this, I think everyone would would be very, very upset about that. And so what's next? Next, they're going to say, do this, or we won't give you money for that. And then it'll just, I mean, I don't want to be a conspiracy theorist or anything, but I do think that it's important for us to maintain the authority that we have been given. And as I, I don't, I don't have an issue with, with E V C Ss at all. It's just the issue of the state strong arming us and then trying to tell us that it's in our best interest.
And is it fair to interpret from both of what you're saying that you would rather stick with what we have and risk whatever potential lack of funding might come down the pike? And but, but risk that based on wanting to stand ground to say you can't take this authority away from us? I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear. Because that's what it sounds like we're being given the decision on. We can, we can make the changes at the state ones and then the black mark is off, or we can stand our ground, the black mark stays on and potentially there is funding down the road of whatever kind that they might withhold and point to this. So I'm just trying to make sure that I, I hear completely what you're saying and I agree completely with what you're saying. And I love especially the way that you phrased it and and made it clear as to why it's such an important thing versus a, you know, we just don't like this kind of a thing. But I just want to understand your perspective on what I see as the decision we're making.
I think you captured my sentiment fairly well.
Same.
I think it'll show in the vote.
Oh, okay.
Well, would somebody like to make a competing motion?
Motion on the table is approved now?
It is.
For a second?
It is. That was, the motion was made by Supervisor Lutweller, seconded by yourself. So your options right now is if you have further discussion regarding this motion, you're free. If you would like to make subsequent motion, you could. If neither of those things happen, I'll call for the vote.
And just to be clear, if we, if we vote and this doesn't pass, then we don't need something that says we're not going to pass it. It just fails because it didn't have a motion to approve it.
Correct.
Okay.
Stay with the existing.
Right.
Until we have.
Right. Okay.
So it, it almost sounds like if we do this, we're going to cave on every other thing that comes down the tube from the state and follow suit with what they, what they would like us to do or what they would want to make us do. I would kind of think that we would take these things as a one on one. You know, some of the things that may be coming down the pipe course, whichever they may be, maybe a lot more substantial than than this one. I certainly understand what Dan's saying. You know, I get everybody's art, you know, argument or their reasoning on this. I just don't know if this is the sword we want to fall on, you know, right now. When we could fight the next one as hard as we like, we, this doesn't mean that everything that comes down the pipe, we're going to go, sure, you told us to, we're going to do it. We take these things one by one by one and we, we fight them, you know, in, in that way.
I think I'm looking at it from the standpoint a couple of things. The first one is there are a whole lot of things that make me angry when I fly. But standing in line at the TSA check in is not the time or the place to voice my grievances on how government runs that particular process. And so I go along to get along at that time and I fight my own little battle my own way. Getting the items that I need where I need them to go and appreciate the fact that I can fly to get there. Or if I don't want to, then I choose to do it differently. In this situation, I feel, I, I hear what Supervisor Fraser is saying loud and clear and a hundred percent agree with the sentiment behind that. But I also think that to stand that ground in terms of giving up potential funding, there may be a way to, as long as we can guard within our county, let the state roll how they may here. If we have processes and checkpoints in place within, then we still maintain our control within without having to risk while we're trying to fight what I think is a battle we won't win. I, I don't like it, but I want the best outcome for the county. So to stand a strong footing here and, you know, let's say several million dollars came through with the opportunity to do whatever and we nixed ourselves out of it. That's a day I wouldn't want to know that was how I leaned today.
I as much as I don't like being threatened, I like being blackmailed even less. It's like, well, if you don't do what I say, you don't get your cookie. The state can keep their money if they're going to tie it to that. I mean, if you're going to say you do exactly what I dictate to you to do, or I don't give you this funding, I don't want your funding. I would rather maintain my integrity than sell myself for future maybe. I, I understand that the, especially we're going through budget hearings and stuff. It's like there is no money. We don't want to turn down anything. The fact that the state can do these kind of things and expect no kickback is, is the I wish that we would have got this a long time ago because I would have loved to have spent four years arguing with the state over this instead of the last second because they are wrong. That's what it comes down to. They are wrong. So why do we have to cave into them? And just take our licking? We're right. They're wrong. Why do we have to lose? That's the question I have. I don't, it's not about E V charging stations. It's not about, it's about right and wrong to me. The state doesn't have the authority to do this to us. So why are we going to let them? That's my question. And you all know where I stand.
So hard. You know, I'm wondering if between R C R C and C S A C we can reach out to them and I, I, I know we're not going to beat down the state, but we can make the case and
I think we've already been in that row. I've sat in multiple R C R C meetings where we are the red county on the map on the great big screen in front of the whole room and I hold space and say, well, we feel what we feel. And then they've just come to the point where they said, all right, well, every county has decided we're done trying to help you. We have discussed with you, we've brought in Go Biz, we've mediated, you know, your concerns back and forth and I don't you might find something different at C S A C, at R C R C. I don't think that's going to be the case.
I agree.
So thi, this was specifically discussed at R C R C? And in what setting?
In the setting of their offering to help us with the implementation process, help us check the boxes, help us understand any points of clarity that are needed. And also just
Get us to comply.
Correct. Well, yes. Yes.
They weren't at all interested in the argument that this is overreach?
I didn't bring it up in this with this passion.
And Ed, can you help us? Do you know how many counties are have this black mark or red mark or whatever, whichever way it is?
No, sir, I don't. And you know, just one point, and it's not very often that I disagree with, with any of the supervisors because I think you, I think everybody up there has a very difficult job in trying to placate the entire county and stay true. I don't, I don't really see this as, and you'll probably tell me to shut up, but I don't really see this as government overreach. I see it as forcing the jurisdictions to actually have a process in place because the building official could still say no, planning commission could still say no, the board could still say no, and then it doesn't happen. So it for, it's forcing a structure to be in place for the building official to review it first. Then if there's nothing that he can, he can actually document as far as findings for health and safety, then it's okay. But if he finds something and says, no, this doesn't make any sense whatsoever, then he could just say no. And then it goes to the planning commission and the plan, if it was appealed to the planning commission, the planning commission could still say, no, this doesn't make sense. If it was appealed again, it could come before the board and the board could still say no. So then it still didn't happen. So I don't like people telling me what to do on a larger scale either, but I know the structure has to be in place. And I think it's more of make sure your framework is in place and you have, you have very specific guidelines to follow. And it's not to put everything on the board. It's to put it at the, you know, the lower level in the building official. I'm saying lower level, but that is a, that's actually a level of attainment in any career to become that building official. So I don't take that position lightly to make those decisions either.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say because of what you said and also what Trent shared, I don't sense from anyone up here that there is a concern about the professional approach, the consistency of, of how individuals assigned with those responsibilities will carry them out, nor that we will have necessarily a bad outcome from this particular process. What I'm hearing from two of the supervisors very adamantly is taking away the authority of the county to manage land use. taking away the authority of the county to manage land use as a county versus telling us, in this instance, you will approve everything we put in front of you unless you can meet these specific things. That that's what, it's, it's not about whether you as staff can protect the county from this particular instance, it's more about how does the county feel about allowing the state to dictate something that at least some supervisors feel they should not be able to dictate. So that two completely different things. And I I just want to say, I don't, I don't sense that there is a distrust or a lack of competence in the ability of staff to carry this out, if that's where we land. Well, I I would say that if 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 we end up with a a decision to leave it as is, then I wouldn't want to stop there. I would want, at least from my perspective, to pursue with contacts at CSAC and anywhere else some assistance in trying to get acknowledgement of our right, if you will, to take this stand and not be penalized for it. And that might be spitting in the wind, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't stop. Let's just put it that way. I don't want to put us at risk of of funding if we decide that we want to stand our ground.
So council question, process-wise, if we were to vote on this today and pursue what Supervisor Lutwiler has suggested, would it be true that this couldn't come back before the board for a decision for a year, or am I thinking of a different process?
If the vote was that it's currently on the table were to fail, it wouldn't be able to come back for a year. If there was a modified vote that had some conditions in it, such as we're going to work, you know, we're going to not approve it at this time, but we're going to work with the state to see if there's other options. And then we had an opportunity to bring it back in the future, we could do that. But again, the if if the current motion pending fails, it cannot come back for a year without suspending the votes.
Okay.
So I'll make another motion, competing with my own, that we not consider this item today and that Supervisor Frazier work with county council and with me as CSAC board member to draft something to go to the appropriate people at CSAC to see what assistance they can provide, if any.
I second that. Would you amend your motion, because I'm more than happy to take it to RCRC as well?
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to avoid the three supervisors, so.
You will create it. I'll simply, well, actually, maybe it funnels through the CAO. Is that cleaner? Is that better?
I I still go back to item A in here, and I'll I'll read it in its entirety.
Just a second, we, did I say a second to that? I said a second with.
Yeah. And and so the second is just to allow for not only that
Just all conduits of possibility.
And when the supervisors will use their board positions to RCRC, CSAC, whichever other organizations to pursue support for our position.
Yes, thank you.
Exactly what Dan is saying. But A, it says, is the intent of this ordinance to encourage the installation of electric vehicle charging stations by removing obstacles for permitting charging stations so long as the action does not supersede the building officials' authority to address higher priority life safety situations. If the building official makes a finding based on substantial evidence that the electric vehicle charging station could have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, as defined in this chapter, the county may require the applicant to apply for a use permit. Okay, so. Or there's already a robust apparatus in place to render a decision regarding streamlining of EVCS applications, or in the case of a determined adverse impact to public health and safety, required an application for a use permit.
So Supervisor Gogan, my question there is if we sit down with our building official, or I guess even it could be Director Presley in this situation and county council, and we draft a memo that says an EV charging station in any district except these constitutes a public health and safety issue. What difference is that than putting it in our ordinance, saying that you can only do it here where it belongs, rather than making Ed, so, oh, yeah, he wants it in a rural residential, that's a public health and safety issue? Because we know either you're going to have people parking for extended periods of time. Are they requiring restrooms in this EV charging station? Is it going to be an ADA compliant restroom in this charging station that you're putting in a middle of town? That now you have people waiting for their car to charge? The issue isn't the fact that they want to streamline it. The issue is the state isn't asking those questions. They're saying, you're going to do this, and we don't give a damn what happens in your neighborhood. You don't get to ask that question. We want an EV charging station. We should have the ability to ask those questions. What is actually going to happen here? Until the state mandates that we do away with SEQA on everything, then they don't get to pick and choose.
Agreed.
Okay. Any further discussion? There's room for a third subsequent. All right, then, Ashley, we'll call for the vote. So we will be voting on the subsequent motion of Supervisor Lutwiler's, that we leave this alone for today and pursue avenues of conversation to, in a sense, essentially fight the state on this before we move forward. No.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Could you repeat that, the motion?
We would leave this alone for today and ask Supervisor Frazier and CAO Tuthill to pursue avenues of cooperation with CSAC to essentially try to fight the state on this before we discuss it further.
And your vote was no?
Correct. Supervisor Lutwiler voted aye.
Aye. My vote, no.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Do you understand what you're voting on? You are
Voting that that we are holding this, we're we're pausing this movement so that Supervisor Frazier and Supervisor Lutwiler can go seek opportunities to have further discussion.
Correct. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I do not say Supervisor Lutwiler and CAO Tuthill.
And CAO Tuthill.
The three, yes.
The three of them can further look into the possibilities of how we can maintain our sovereignty over the decisions of land use in this county, rather than surrendering them to the state on this issue.
Correct. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were clear. All right, great. Supervisor Frazier.
I don't know. I'm torn between the idea of trying to talk to the state or just doing away with this entirely. I'm tired of this conversation. I guess I'll say aye.
All right, motion passes. Human Resources, item 4.2, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.410A, authorize hiring candidate number 54201612 as mechanic one at range T189, step E in the Department of Transportation. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for a mechanic one at A step is $6,263, and at E step is $7,327. Director Hamilton, serving as HR.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Thank you. We would bring this item requesting approval to move forward. And Department of Transportation has made this recommendation in consideration of the applicant's background, and we'd be in support of that.
All right, thank you. Questions of board members?
I just have one question. It's probably clarifying question, I guess. We had one of these that was almost exactly the same in consent. So what's the difference between the this one, the next one, and the one that were in consent?
Yeah, thank you. I've been asked that question this morning, so we're happy to bring that publicly. So it has to do with threshold. And so on consent, we would only bring a request for a B or C step. Anything above the C step threshold, we would bring on county matters for discussion.
Thank you.
All right, hearing other questions, we would open this for public comment. Anybody in the room? And any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, closing public comment, bring it back to the board.
Move to approve as presented?
I will second.
Motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Item 4.3, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.410A, authorize hiring candidate number 52026371 as a road maintenance worker two at range T191, step D, in the Department of Transportation. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for road maintenance worker two at A step is $6,366, and at D step is $7,194.
Yes, thank you. Same comment supply.
All right, thank you. Questions of board members? All right, hearing none, we'll open for public comment. Any in the room? And any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board, entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented?
I will second.
Motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Item 4.4, take the following actions retroactively effective July 1, 2023. Number one, approve the amended job description for senior financial analyst at range M244. And number two, update the title of the classification listed on the salary schedule and alphabetical listing of classifications from senior fiscal analyst to read senior financial analyst. No fiscal impact. Director Hamilton.
Thank you. This is a more of a housekeeping matter in that this job description is available in to multiple departments, however it has been in primarily in the admin department. And so what this is doing is cleaning up the language within the job description about who this position can report to and who they may supervise. In this cleanup, it makes it available, as stated, to other county departments. With department head, of course, discretion and how they want to budget and make that available.
Okay, thank you. Questions? All right, hearing none, we'll open the public comment. Any in the room? Seeing none, any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Anyone care to make a motion?
4.4, as stated.
All right.
Second?
Motion by Supervisor Gogan, second by Supervisor Lutwiler. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Thank you. Right, item 4.5, authorize step increases for permanent part-time employees. ID number 03109 from G142A to G142C, ID number 02134. From G142B to G142E, ID number 02182. From G142B to G142E, effective July 1, 2023. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per year for each is as follows. ID number 03109, $1,870. ID number 02134, $4,226. ID number 02182, $3,019. For a total of $9,115 for fiscal year 2324. Director Hamilton.
Thank you. Within county code, permanent part-time employees are not on a rotation for step increases as in traditional full-time permanent employees. And so this is a special request for consideration so that department head can evaluate and receive board's permission to essentially take their hours of service and calculate that into what otherwise would have been on a schedule for increases. And with that, we ask for permission to move forward.
All right, thank you. Questions?
I just have a question. Sometimes we see in the comments that the collective bargaining units have weighed in and in support or whatever, and not, I didn't see that here. Do you know? Was this brought to them? Is there an opinion that been shared from them, or does it not matter because they're not covered because they're part-time or what?
They're not in the bargaining unit.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And and basically, we're just, we don't have a formal process by which people can earn these step increases when they're part-time versus full-time?
That's correct. This would be the process, bringing it to the board.
But further, it would be under the discretion of the department head's evaluation outcome.
Correct, and available budget.
Okay. Okay, other questions? All right, with that, we will open public comment. Any in the room? Seeing none, is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
All right, close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Move to approve as presented?
I will second.
Motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
I think that it is worth noting that when we look at and consider and vote on different be it a step increase or, you know, that that would result from a wonderful evaluation and available funding, we see numbers, these numbers represent people. And I just want to say thank you to these unknown to me, folks who are really committed to the county and to their jobs and appreciate what they do. So all right, with that, we have no closed session today, so we will adjourn this meeting.